Please silence, shut off your cell phone and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Melanie, I did bring an addition, possible addition for today. Oil CC license request.
Yeah.
Delivolt. Any other additions or additions?
I thought you guys might want to discuss the support letter for the Watson Creek Fire and replacement project.
Correct, thank you. With that said, Commissioner, you don't have any additions or plegions for you?
No, thank you.
Start right off with Jake Greer, USF grant modification.
Okay, so it's the modification of the previous agreement we have with the Forest Service. No many changes, there's two changes. Alan Grob was our previous point of contact with the Forest Service. He left for Big and Better Water, so now our point of contact is Greg Campbell. So that's on the first sheet there, bottom box nine, Greg Campbell. And the individual we work with when we send our grant money in is to our grant recorder. This is Krista Golds out of Penn. And the other change is if you look at the purpose of modification right there in the middle of the page, the first box of check, change in performance period, one in standard exploration data this agreement, December 31st to 2020. What this allows us to do is we, I believe there's 11 or 17, I mean there on the side of caution, 11 parks and campground that we take care of, our work crew takes care of out west. Lofton, Old Brook, the restroom right there on courts. And then direct them out here, lower cotton move as well, and rest them out here. We clean the restrooms, replenish the toilet paper, and then they break down the fire pits, pick all the trash, unburnt wood, and take them all down, all that stuff off. Make it nice and great. So we do that on a weekly, five, once or twice a week, we're out there doing that stuff. They pay, if they don't have the supplies in the hand, we go by and we give them a verse for those. Otherwise, we get paid 54 cents a mile for the week. So it goes back into our work crew fund to take care of the gas and oil changes and where it turned vehicles.
So that's two days a week and we work four days a week?
One, two, depends on what we have on.
Okay, and Zavron, from May through October, what?
It depends on the weather, depends on the weather.
Is courts locked now? Are that, courts, do we deal during the winter?
I haven't been out that way, so I'm not sure. We haven't done any for the last two months because we haven't, we've only been running two days a week, so I'm not entirely sure.
Someone just told me the other day it was locked.
It probably is.
So it's, it's working out?
Okay. Great.
So we'll carry that forward for tomorrow. Jake, your next is Lake Health District MOU.
Okay, which one do you guys have?
Um, Community District MOU, to not exceed 252,000 per year.
This is our Federal Real Justice Court grant. We, we have MOUs creating partnership and doing the work. The thing that I neglected was to assign MOU when we submit our quarterly reports in cooperation. And remember, we got our money in relatively quick, but we haven't, we haven't shelled out the money to the wellness center or the Lake Health District because of the MOU in place allowing for that to happen. So what this provides, it provides, they provide 70% FTE and just over 50% QMHC for drug work.
So this is over a three-year period with the governor's proposed budget and everything. Is the funding going to be there and you feel comfortable for three years?
And as it states in the MOU, this contingent upon the money being there and it becomes voidable when the money stops.
Okay, and if the money, the amount come down, then it can be adjusted that way also?
I don't think it's going to come down, I think it'll stay there because that's what we're trying to.
Okay.
And then the second MOU with the, uh, Lake Health District is for our Criminal Justice Commission Drug Court Grant. And that's not to exceed 46,000 over a two-year period. And that is 1.26 FTEC. So we have almost a one full-time employee drug alcohol counselor assigned to our treatment court. By the way, it works, we don't just have one because I dig them, there's specific treatment groups. So we do have to put in the, uh, two at the minimum, oftentimes three, if the third is over there. They don't all do it full-time, they do 30% of the time here, 50% of the time there. So it amounts to, equates to about 1 FTE, the working treatment group.
That looks great.
So I won't be able to make the meeting tomorrow because we have a federal, we're being audited on a federal, not an audit, it's a review of our financials for the federal, federal grant. So I won't be able to, Rachel will be sitting in my place, so she'll be ready to question.
And I, I don't believe that Rachel even needs to be there for these, or they're just general go-throughs. So unless you want a representative there, I don't have any additional questions. I don't anticipate any, but whatever you want to do.
Yeah. We'll drill Rachel really hard.
Thank you. Mr. Gregory.
Yes, sir.
Perfect time.
Really?
You're, you are in the hot seat right now.
Tell me, not very.
I'm running fast, sorry, Todd.
That's okay. I'm glad to come up.
What, we could postpone it till January.
That's all right. I'll go.
And if you need a little time to prepare, I can go on down through the.
No, I'm good, I just need to hold you for a minute.
All right.
So.
Welcome.
Yeah, cold over here.
It's warm today, that's right.
It's town on the way every day, so it's a heat wave.
Morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Todd Gregory of Lake City Renewables. Here today to talk about the Strategic Investment Program Agreement that we've been working on, I think for about six months or so. And I think we're finally ready to execute and move forward. Just a quick update on the project itself. We have submitted our application for land use approval to EPC, Energy Facility Society Council. We did that about a month ago. And now we're responding to interlocutaries and other requests for information and so forth. That's all going well. We're in negotiations with the Climate Tribe over, you know, satisfying their concerns with cultural artifacts outside. We're in discussions with ODFW regarding mitigation, a mitigation plan for, to mitigate the big game winter range territory. Those are the two biggies, everything else is pretty much, they're pretty much been satisfied on land use perspective.
Can I ask how, working with the state and the big game winter range, how that's going?
It, you know, it's going, um, they don't, they don't, you know, they, I don't think they've seen, you know, they haven't seen a project this large before, so it's, it's all kind of new for them. This law hasn't been for us, so. But as far as negotiating with them, so far they've been, you know, reasonable. There's a few points that were, we're kind of arguing over, but, um, we're coming up with a comprehensive mitigation plan that includes, you know, the removal, obnoxiously control, some conservation, you know, putting some property in a conservation, you know, so it's a pretty comprehensive plan that I think that was a little satisfied.
I'm just very interested, when you get to the end, it's a way on land use, we run into winter range on private lands, or planning winter range, that type of thing.
Yeah, no, it's, it's an interesting process, for sure.
Thank you.
So that's where we are, we still plan on, um, doing a soft breaking ground, if you will, if we get to 2019. And we'll be, you know, kind of more in full construction of 2020, 2021, 2022. So we're still, we're still working on the power and, you know, the general electric at some point on the interconnection side. That's all going kind of as planned, you know, it's a slow process, but it's always a slow process, so it's nothing. So on the Strategic Investment Program Agreement, the, um, the idea behind the Strategic Investment Program is to give companies, not just renewable energy companies, but company, any company that plans on making a large investment into a county or municipality that has, you know, enacted a strategic investment program. So, um, an incentive to build large projects that can provide employment, other economic benefits to the region in exchange for a, a negotiated tax return with the company. So our project, we estimate to be, when we, assuming, this is all assuming we build a 400-megawatt project. That's what our models are based off of, that's what this agreement is based off of. If we build a 400-megawatt project up in Four Rock, that'll be right around a $500 million cost, initial cost. If it's smaller than that, it'll be a little bit less than that. But, um, so according to the statutes for how to, to manage the Strategic Investment Program, what you have with a project that size is you take, your first $50 million of cost on the project is basically taxed at full, at the full county rate, just like it was, you know, in the newly constructed building. And it's just going on the tax rolls at the norm rates. So look at section, page three, section four, B, number one, where it talks about abnormal property taxes. That's the amount we're talking about federal. So that generates an amount that's paid to the county every year. And then that amount goes up by 3% a year for the life of the agreement. And then after you collect that amount, and then we pay what's called community service fee. That's really the negotiated amount that we pay to the county. The, um, the way that the statute says that you calculate this is that you take your full 500 million, you deduct the 50 million that you're going to be taxed on, and then you take 25% of that number and then apply the, apply the taxes.
And just for clarification, when you say county gives those taxes, that the taxing districts within the county is.
Right, right, yeah, when I refer to the county, it's just kind of what you see on your property tax return. So all of those taxes.
I just wanted to add on the record.
Thank you for the clarification, because that becomes important on the, you know. The, um, so when we, when you calculate the community service fee on 400-megawatt project, based on how the statute comes out, it comes out to about a little bit less than $1,600 a megawatt on average of 13, 15 years. So when we, um, we want to do a little bit better than that to the county. And we're also doing that, something else for the school that we'll talk about in a minute. But our community service fee, we would like to do, it's $2,000 per megawatt a year for the life of the project. That's a little bit more than the statutory amount that would be calculated if we went in and did an evaluation every year. But we'd like to get away from having to do an evaluation every year because those valuations can change. I think you guys have seen that with Ruby, I've done it recently. And, um, and those valuations can be subject to appeal and so forth. So we want to avoid all that, we think it's worth paying a little bit more for here to have some certainty, both for us and for you, for the budgeting. So we're proposing $2,000 per megawatt a year. Now, that goes to the county, the county has some flexibility on that. The way the SIP rules work is we do a negotiation and determine the amount that we're going to pay in the community service fee. And then you guys have a separate, you guys, maybe the county, has a separate agreement and negotiation with the taxing districts and then with the service territory to figure out how to split up the money that you want to give. And we don't give, the developer, we don't have a seat at the table at that, that's all, that's between you and the taxing district. So one thing we're doing, in addition to the $2,000 per megawatt, is we've agreed to pledge to the Northlake School District, assuming we can get this agreement executed and we build, and of course build the project, that we would give them $10,000 per megawatt one-time payment to their foundation. So on a 400-megawatt project, the school will get $4 million once we complete the project to their foundation. It's just a charitable donation. The reason we did that was because there's a lot of rules around, um, you know, how the, how the school gets their funding and how they, how the state moves money around within its taxing system and recalculates how much of that funding they get depending on how much local receipts they receive versus state dollars and so forth. So in order to avoid the possibility of the school not getting as much net, net benefit from this project, we just said, well, let's just, let's just give them some money to the, to the foundation and kind of cut that off, cut that whole process off, you know, at the head. So the county will get $2,000 per megawatt, plus the abnormal taxes on the 50 million per year. And then the school's going to get a one-time payment of 400, excuse me, $4 million. They're very excited about this project, as you can imagine, and the, um, and the contemplation, you know, receiving that money. So, um, I didn't bring my spreadsheet, it kind of shows the numbers that we can, but I think it comes out to in the first year, almost about 1.35 million to the county. And then, and then that number, I think it increases slightly over 15 years to about 1.6. And, um, and then of course the, the, the school gets their, gets their money and they're going to do what they need to do with their money. So we think it's a pretty fair deal. I think it makes us one of the largest taxpayers in the county. And we're excited about, we're excited about the budgets.
Yeah.
Yeah, I figured.
So on the school part, given the build updates, how do you envision your work with the state legislature? They're very aware of these, these kinds of dollars, not counting towards state support, not regular taxation, that there's any possibility, because I'm assuming you're not going to cut the school district any kind of check until it's built.
That's correct.
That this might all fall through relative to what the money is going to be.
We talked to our legal counsel about this and, um, it's far, I mean, there's no legal way for somebody to go and attach money that's coming in as a donation to their foundation. Completely private, you know, private money coming into the private foundation. The foundation isn't tied to the school funding or anything like that. So, um, I mean, the state can try to do a lot of things, but we don't see that much risk to any of them being able to get their hands on that money.
So my second question is, what would this again, I'm a little, when you were explaining how the valuation came out to be $1,600 a megawatt hour, how, how did it get that low relative to the current agreements of 7,000? And how that's calculated?
So the, um, so there's, there's two completely different programs. The, the $7,000 a megawatt program is called the Pen and Bill Taxing Pilot Agreement. Pilot Agreement was specifically contemplated for smaller solar projects, just solar projects. So five to 10-megawatt type solar projects. At the time it was contemplated, price of the cost for, um, solar prices were probably 50% more than they are today. The cost for equipment, you know, basically to build one, probably, you know, it's a lot more, there was a lot more money when they contemplated $7,000 a megawatt. So the, and we've done several projects under the pilot agreement in Lake County. And, um, but even the last, so the first couple of agreements we did under the pilot agreement were $7,000 a megawatt made sense because the costs on those and the PPAs that we received on those provided a higher valuation for megawatt on those smaller projects, if that makes sense. So $7,000 a megawatt provided an adequate incentive for us to, to build the projects. But then you fast forward to today, and we're talking about a big project, that's a 400-megawatt project. The costs have come down dramatically and the PPA pricing has come down dramatically, especially at scale. So you have time, working force, you know, becoming more efficient, then you have scale working for us on this side of the project that's, you know, 50 to 100 times larger than some of these other projects that have received the pilot program. So, um, so we feel that basically a $2,000 per megawatt, um, a $2,000 per megawatt community service fee under the SIP agreement provides about the same pro-rata value as a $7,000 per megawatt pilot project, a smaller project two, three years ago. So, um, for example, um, you know, we think that we're going to build this project for about a dollar a lot. So they, the smaller black cloud project was, you know, about $3 a lot. And the power purchase agreement on this one is going to be, you know, somewhere in the three to three and a half cent, all part.
But we don't, we don't actually have a signed agreement.
We don't have that, we have provisions in the agreement that will adjust this amount up or down depending on when we actually go to build the project, we're going to look at the power purchase agreement and the cost numbers. And if there's more than a 10% difference either way, we're going to adjust that community service fee. That's detailed in, um, page three, number four, four C. So.
So if it's above that, and go out, and follow it, will this hold steady?
No. Go both ways.
Oh, okay.
I don't think it's going to be, I, I think we're going, I think we're going to be pretty close before they have an agreement. But I understand that, you know, county wanted a little bit more safety built into the, you know, that's perfectly reasonable to protect the constituents.
So reading that, reading Steve, and you talking about the power purchase agreement, or just layman's terms, it doesn't capture exactly what you said about power purchase being part of that evaluation. So that is part of the project value, the power purchase agreement is part of that?
Yes.
Is that the way you read that?
Yes.
It's not spelled out as.
Yeah, well, we, we refer to it in exhibits, P and D, and those, those exhibits are, they show the model, how we calculate it based on a given power purchase agreement or certain cost.
The, one of the last things, I guess I would have to say right now, Todd, I mean, we've, uh, fairly good, close working relationship over the last, uh, years. This particular one, I know the size is, is something absolutely new in the whole process, community service fee, the payment to the school. And I think you and I chatted about this before, but the negotiation with the school prior to us has really put us in a position where we don't have really any options. Because as we talked before, the value of 4 million spread over that 15 years on a per-megawatt basis that would increase that because I think as you alluded to, you can increase that 2,000 because you locked into the 4 million. But for future negotiations, I would see a totally different one than that. So at least we have the option and have some discussion on it.
That's 266,660, there are a lot of sixes in there, and I don't like a lot of sixes.
Yeah.
Maybe it's going the right place, I don't know. On the school part, I wanted to be very clear through our minutes that we were not part of any of that negotiation period. Because you say that it's all, we have legal advice and everything that you're giving it to the foundation, I think, possibly at the state level, things we've looked at in different things. And that was not part of our negotiations or part of the pilot, and we want to make sure that's in the record. And that's entirely between you and the school board, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, part and partial of that, that the, the new board here will be faced with is carrying on what we've tried to set as a precedence for repeatable. So, you know, if there are, if there is another project, let's say it's down in this mega, we've got to be able to be mindful that the school district here, District 7, you know, pays depending on where it was cited, has to be able to be treated the same, and so.
Yeah, and that's our intention, I mean, the, the whole reason we did it that way is because, um, in, it, kind of following our principles, we like to make the impact of the project, the economic impact of the project. principles, we like to make the impact of the project, the economic impact of the project, be felt closest to where the project is. And so we, we felt the best way to do that, discussing, you know, multiple ways to have benefit in Northlake County, the consensus was to put the money in the hands of the Northlake School District. And so that's why we did that. You know, honestly, you know, there's, for as long as you've both been commissioners, there's always been a, you know, a Northlake, Southlake rift. And when we actually talked to the school about just, you know, doing it all through the county, and, you know, the folks in Northlake really wanted us to do it this way.
And we've, and we've talked, we're, we're supporting the community service, and, but as I said, it does put the future boards in a situation where whatever they do needs to be repeatable based on this precedent. And I'll go back to something you said earlier, when you said the company no longer gets involved with the tax aid, I mean, taxation, regular taxation set, and then the community service fee, that's up to the county and the taxing districts as to how that's done. Well, we took that out of our hands. I mean, we could have done something similar, in a sense, but now we can't.
Well, then, the school didn't have a seat at the table.
No.
Under law.
That's right.
So that's why the, you know, there's something...
I'm a little bit more blunt and straightforward that SIPs negotiated with the board commissioners, and you talked in negotiations way from our very first meeting before SIP was even discussed. They were working in different directions, politically, we got a lot of pressure, and we made some discussions with school boards, with other places. So the negotiation was taken away from board commissioners, which hard to be is, is to negotiate a SIP. And I, I'm a little more straightforward, we caught them, we was going to use this, we tied the hands. And so our initial, when we reached out to us, our initial, we were just after we started the negotiation, SIP wasn't on the table at that time. And once it became on the table, we weren't part of some of those discussions that really went way out there and where you're at today.
And at the end of it, and that's got to be as clear as everything else that we're talking about, is we really, I, I believe, so, I mean, I'm a state commissioner, there's a support notion of more fighting school district is going to get that money, and it's really...
So moving on to that part, unless, did you have different, other things? We do have, on page five, number two, we have a...
Yeah, yeah, actually, Ann pointed this out to me the other day. A little bit embarrassed to say, when I talked to my, when I talked to my attorney about this, she said, oh, that wasn't supposed to be the agreement. I said, well, it's kind of too late now, it is in the agreement, so we need to fill it out. Because we never actually defined what the minimum revenue amount is. In other agreements that have been, SIP agreements that have been done, the minimum revenue amount has been add to the alarm taxes and so on. So if we, if we default on the agreement, what this is hitting at, is if we default on the agreement, what's the minimum amount that we're going to, that the county can find, if we default. And typically, that's down to the tax...
I guess I see it as exactly what the agreement, the SIP agreement is, is what that should be. Much the same if somebody, as somebody doesn't pay their property tax, goes into foreclosure plus interest, why wouldn't we do this to be different to, how could you arrest the taxation? It's a, this is a formal agreement for tax break, so you're...
Well, it's liquidated damages, so the reality of it is, is if this ever defaults, which it's not ever going to default, but if this ever defaults, you're probably dealing with a, a project that's, that doesn't have the money. So, so...
So with your comfort, you're never going to default, you're personal fund?
No, I don't think it worries us. I was going to come and say sixty percent of the money is fine, but, yeah. That's what's, that's what's been in all the other agreements. It's just, it's a protection for the county to say, you know, how much are you going to get at the end of the, you know, if, if we, if the project completely goes belly up and, you know, the company goes, goes under, how much, how much of this contract can the county sign? See, the problem is with this is that under most agreements, this, like I said, this, this shouldn't have actually been in there under, she, she did this off of another old agreement. In the agreements that she did this off of, they, they define the minimum revenue amount, and the minimum revenue amount is usually defined as the add to the alarm tax. So if you want to say, you know, if you want to say the hundred percent of the add to the alarm taxes that would have been due, we're okay with that.
Ann, so you're just talking on the fifty million dollar evaluation on add to the alarm tax? Or would it be on the full value of the project at the time? If we're going to go to that, the alarm tax, and it should be taxed on the full, it wouldn't just be the fifty million dollars that this, I guess that's where my mind goes, if you want to go with the add to the alarm tax, it would go to the full value of the whole project at the time.
Again, the minimum revenue amount is usually gets taxed, so, you know, so if you wanted to define the minimum revenue amount as the full amount due, yeah, I mean, that doesn't really make much sense to me.
Well, the, I guess, trying to, without the assessor sitting here maybe, Ann, you're going, you're, you're, the add to the alarm tax is, doesn't need to be stated there, the first fifty million, that's an absolute, if you go default, that's still there. That's just like any other taxation, we'll send you a delinquent notice, you owe those taxes, they'll carry interest, correct?
Yeah, no, I think the whole, the whole thing cares interest, and the whole, you know, the community service fee, I think there's provisions in there that say, you know, if we don't make the payment, you know, you go collect interest, just like it's a regular...
But what I'm saying is, is add to the alarm goes on, whether you default or not, that's just our taxation, that's normal taxation on the first fifty million, period.
I, I think so. I, you'd have to look, we'd have to look at the, the laws under the SIP, you know, the statutes, but I'm not exactly sure how that works.
And you're saying that the additional money that's received under the SIP is based on revenue, and if you went default, there'd be no revenue?
Right. Yeah, we didn't involve the two of us. And if you got any...
I don't know.
So if, if we, if it's sixty percent, I'm just looking at the first year, and we did default, sixty percent of one point three five.
Well, what I'm saying is, you just, we just say, instead of, instead of putting it as a, as a percent, to the default amount, say the default amount shall mean the amount equal to the add to the alarm taxes due to the county map property tax.
So that'd just be the... I'm not overly comfortable with that, just, I mean, this is our first discussion on it.
I think we need to do some, as you were going to do some, I understand the concept, if you're taxed on revenue and you default, you're having no revenue beyond, I mean, the responsibility beyond the add to the alarm tax that the two thousand dollars a megawatt is based on.
Correct. I'm saying that where this language came from was from an older agreement, and it referred to, it referred to the, it referred to the add to the alarm taxes as the minimum amount.
I think it would simplify, if we go back to your question, Commissioner Todd, would just simply guarantee it's not going to go default?
Sure. Yeah. Put it in the... A guarantee from Todd out of Todd's pocket isn't, isn't much good for you guys.
More to look at there.
It's liquidated damages, is all it is. If it defaults. But you guys, as a county, you have other remedies besides liquidated damages to get your money, because you're a taxing district.
Reading the rest of it there, there's other, I mean, even if we put it in there, there's still negotiations within sixty days to try to, you probably can, basically.
Well, there's a cure period, you know. Basically, what that's there for is that, you know, when one county, you guys default agreement before it's pulled right on the handle or something like that.
He just wants to get, he just wants us to carry this forward for a decision tomorrow, so he sort of need to get that figured out. So there's work to be done on that. Other discussion, anything else on the SIP agreement?
So what I'm hearing is, they should figure out this little bit, you can't just gloss, and we should be okay. So I'll, I will have some research done and an answer back to you by the end of the day. I'll have some answers back to you by the end of the day, if I don't have...
Yeah, and I would like Commissioner Ann, maybe work with our assessor.
Yeah.
Could you do some of that?
Make sure the agreement with what is found out. Is he here?
Yeah.
Yeah. So actually, if you want to go down and visit a little bit right now, we're, we're going to be in session for a little bit longer. We don't have timed items, I don't know if Jake Steer is going to be present for today.
I thought so.
I thought so. So we're going to take a ten-minute break, we'll come back at, it'll be about thirteen minutes, come back at five minutes to ten.
Okay.
You can have visit a little bit, maybe even check on a couple things. I know that's a short window, but I think we're at a point where we can maybe have a little bit of discussion. Clarification to the board.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, we're going to take a recess.